Here.
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 Here, Mrs. Booton, will you lead us to the question? Are there any modifications to the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, I just have two things. Just a reminder, board members, on June 29th, we have our board self-evaluation with IASB. Just maybe prior to the meeting, if you could read through our principles of operation, and there's a tab on, under the board on the district website, just take a look at those. We'll probably want to reaffirm those or make any adjustments while we're there. As the board knows, Dr. Mary Yaboah notified us that she'll be moving out of state and resign her seat on June 30th, creating a vacancy on our Board of Education. Dr. Yaboah was elected to the board in April 2021, and on behalf of the Board of Education, I thank Dr. Yaboah for her services to our students, staff, and community. The Board of Education is seeking residents who would like to be considered for appointment to fill the vacancy on the seven-member board. The board will appoint an individual to fill the remainder of the term through the consolidated election in April of 2023. Early next week, the district will be communicating additional information about the application process. We will publish this information via email, the district website, and social media, a press release to local newspapers, and we will ask our municipal partners to publish and share this information throughout our communication channels. Okay, that's all I have. Dr. Schuler?
I have just a couple of things for the board that I wanted to share this evening. Number one, I want to start by recognizing that we're in June. June is Pride Month, and we've historically celebrated Pride Month in the in the month of June to commemorate the anniversary of the Stonewall Rebellion in New York City, which is considered by many historians to kind of be the birth of the LGBTQ+ movement. So in District 200, we certainly work hard to serve as advocates and allies for our students, make sure that we are creating and sustaining an inclusive culture for all students in District 200, certainly including our students that are part of the LGBTQ+ community. So wanted to mention that at the start of our meeting this month. Two other celebrations, specifically student celebrations. I think the board, I know the board is aware of this because it was shared at the Wheaton-Warnville South graduation, but at the same time that we were celebrating our graduates from Wheaton-Warnville South, we actually had one of our graduates that was competing in the IHSA State Track Championship. Reese Young actually was the state champion in the 100-meter race, and so he missed his graduation, but as I think Mr. McDermott said, I think he was celebrated in another way by many, many people, both at graduation as he was recognized and at the state championship. We will invite Reese to a future board meeting if he's able to make it to be recognized for that, but I do recognize that he's a graduate, so I don't know if we will be able to get him to a meeting. In your green folders, you have an update from this school year of all of the gifts that have been accepted by the Board of Education. They total a little over $106,000 in very generous gifts from a lot of our PTAs and booster support organizations. And so annually, while you accept those gifts every month, I'd just like to recognize them in totality at the end of the year because they certainly represent important resources for the school district, but I think they also represent a lot of human capital and support that sits behind our schools that we very much appreciate. And then the final recognition I wanted to do this evening is that we had some students from Wheaton-Warnville South that competed in the Illinois Design Educators Association State Championship. And so that is an association that actually does a competition in CAD and architectural drawings. We had a student named Danny Roofalo that actually took first place in architectural CAD drawing, and a student named Leahy Jammin that took first place in architectural board competition. And we had a student that took second place in architectural board in Max Dudick. And so I did share with the building that we would recognize those students tonight for their accomplishment. So again, I think we do our best throughout the year to make sure we're recognizing students for achievements in a whole lot of areas, including the arts, athletics, extracurricular music, and add to that list now students that competed in architectural contests. So that's all I have this evening.
Mrs. Lackenow, do we have any public comments?
I think we do, yes.
As she's going, we do have one?
I believe we do.
Okay, I'll read my thing here. So as with all comments, please be aware that it's the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comment. Until the time has been taken together adequate information, the board is there to listen. Lack of action or direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per Board Policy 2.230, the time allotted for each person to speak during public comment may be shortened, we will not need to shorten it tonight. To preserve confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process. In your public comment, please include your name. Whether you are a resident of the district, please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Hanlon will be raising his hand at the three-minute mark as a reminder. Please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. Mr. Rutledge?
President, that's going to be awfully hard for me to go along with all those requirements that you just read on. On May 24th...
Wait just a second, we're going to get the mic on, I'm not sure if it's on. Sorry.
Is it working? Is it working?
Yeah.
Okay. On May 24th, I attended the Eagle Dinner for Monroe Middle School, and if you haven't attended that, you really should. It was a very inspirational evening where children, students were recognized and teachers were recognized for their outstanding conduct and performance. And I was just very pleased to be invited to attend that and want to congratulate the district and particularly Monroe for that. I've had the opportunity on several occasions to tour the Jefferson School and to meet the staff there, and again, what an amazing facility and staff we have at Jefferson, and it's a terrific asset for our community, and I commend you for that. I've had the opportunity in the last couple of years to attend several theatrical and musical events at Wheaton North, even though my son was a tiger, and I would just comment that what I saw there was very, very professional in every single case. The people performing, the students that were there, it was just very well done. And finally, a year ago, I moved in next to Lowell School, and we've gotten to know some of the kids and some of the faculty and staff there, and it's just a wonderful experience living next to that school. And again, I offer my thanks for that as an asset for our community. That's really all I have, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Rutledge. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, acceptance of gifts from Monroe Middle School PTA, acceptance of gift to Wheaton-Warnville South High School Art Department, acceptance of gift to Wheaton-North High School Performing Arts Program, acceptance of gift to Wheaton-North High School Bass Fishing Team, the Anglers Club, approval of the posting of the updated DuPage Area Occupational Education System Intergovernmental Agreement, approval of liability insurance with CLIC, approval of workers' compensation renewal with SELF, approval of zero graphic bond paper bid, approval of pin shop paper bid, approval of kindergarten Chromebooks, approval of Sentinel One endpoint security antivirus renewal, approval of classroom technology equipment refresh, Capital Projects Summer 2023, approval of bills payable and payroll, approval of minutes, May 11th, 2022, open and closed, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to January 2021 as allowable by law, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, any other information?
Yeah, just a second reminder, the first four items are generous gifts to the school district, we certainly appreciate that. Quick reminder that item 13 is just the approval to move forward with developing bid docs for the summer 2023 work, and while you might question why so early on that, I think experience of the summer and anybody I've talked to that is anywhere near construction work has said if that work is not out to bid extremely early, we will not get the supply material that we need for next summer. And so we met with your facilities committee to review the projected projects, and thus that item is giving us authorization to move forward with developing those bid docs so that that will be back in front of the board hopefully by September. And then just the last thing I wanted to do is make a quick introduction. I see sitting in the audience is Scott Chetister, who's on the personnel report tonight. Scott is actually going to be in the position of Director of Middle School Instruction, so he's joining Melissa's team and filling, I think, a position that's certainly well-needed within the Teaching and Learning Department. Scott, I think, has actually been in the district now for three years, he's had a different job every year, and there's been a new opportunity that's come available from really two different positions that we launched. So actually, this is three positions, three-year, all brand-new that he stepped into. So I just, I wanted to recognize and welcome Scott as you approve the personnel report.
Are there any questions or comments from board members?
I just had one question regarding the personnel report, and it's not necessarily an answer I want tonight, but maybe in the next meeting we can have a little discussion on it. You know, hiring is a major challenge in every business, every facet of life right now. I just wondered if we had any specific concerns, trends we're seeing as we get into the next school year, changes that may be different from what we've experienced in the past that the board should be aware of. So again, I don't need that answer now, but you know, a discussion may be something we can put into the meeting next month.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up is policy approval for the consent agenda. Revised policy 5.120, revised policy 6.60, revised policy 7.290, revised policy 7.315, new policy 4.165. Are there any items board members want removed from the policy approval consent agenda? Okay, Dr. Schuler, any more information?
We don't. I do just want to quickly mention that in your green folders, we did receive just today or yesterday, it may have been Tuesday, an email from a community member with some feedback on policy 660, which is your policy on curriculum content. So I just wanted to share that with the board. When we receive comments from community members, we do include them in your green packet. We don't get a lot on policy, but just sharing that with you.
And that email has no impact on...
It does. So the core one, I think the very basic question that I will address is that anything that's in Board Policy 6.60, that is a requirement in school code. So it is a legislative update that has added a new required topic to be taught in our schools. So there are no revisions in 660 that are simply a result of a local policy decision to add items to our curriculum. Any change that we make in our curriculum, we bring through your curriculum development process. These are legislative updates that have simply updated school code on required topics to be taught, so just for clarity on that.
So if there was anything in this email, I haven't had a chance to read it, but if there's anything in this email that we felt might be something we wanted to apply locally, then we would send that through the committee process and go through a cycle again as appropriate?
On the curriculum side specifically, correct, yes.
And also, a lot of this wording, I think, just to reiterate what you said, this all comes from, from what I remember, sorry, I'm just reading this right now. This one in the email, it's the bottom of the second page where it lists all the different types of history, sorry, I don't feel like this mic is working so well, all the different types of history must be taught, and it lists all the different things there, I know he too, sort of things, but, and then, and there was a comment about using some different wording, but I believe this wording, like you said, it comes directly out of school code. And so I just want to acknowledge that I understand what they're saying, but I do feel that we should stay with the school code as they define it, but I just want to acknowledge that I understand what they're saying, but yeah.
And I do a last little piece that I'll just mention for the board, just because we recently completed, as I shared with the board, a five-year compliance review. So when the ROE does the five-year compliance review, every one of those items, they do specifically come in and look for curriculum on that topic and/or lesson plans specifically on the topic. So again, just to be very, very clear within the policy, we are mirroring the language that's in school code on those required topics, and whether we changed the language in the policy or not, we are still required specifically to teach every one of these topics that's identified in school code.
Right, okay. I appreciate the feedback, so.
Am I allowed to make a comment on those?
Yes.
I don't know if this is very loud, but this isn't a, I understand your comment, this isn't to change it, but I just wanted to note for the record, an interesting way that language can be used to mean several different things, and one of them that I found interesting was the wording that, of the requirement that the teaching of the reasons why Black people were enslaved could have otherwise been written, the reasons why European colonizers enslaved African people. So I think it's important to note how language sort of has a lot of meaning when presumably you're saying the same thing. So if we can continue to take a careful look at language in these policies and others, I think it'd be helpful.
To Mary's point, and I know we've talked about this with something else, if we as a board were to agree on something like that, let's use your, for example, we have, and I think it's through you, have a way of submitting that to press, is that correct? If we wanted to, to actually try to change the wording throughout the entire press. Does that make sense? You know, so I'm not saying we need to have that discussion tonight, but that is an avenue we could take. I don't know that we have taken it, but it is something that...
Yeah, I guess, Susan, just the one piece.
I mean, not that they would accept it, but...
The one piece that I would add to it, though, is again, it is mirroring language that's in a law, so I think probably the appropriate advocacy would be at the level of where school code is written.
But some press writes.
What's that?
Press does produce language.
Absolutely, it does. In some circumstances, they write, they write language. I'm just pointing out, in this particular case, the language in that policy is reflecting what's written in school code in the law.
Okay, that makes sense.
And the press is generally very clear, as you'll know from the policy committee, they're very clear when something is written from press as a best practice versus something that is specifically has a reference in school code, right? They write those references directly into there.
Other questions or comments for Dr. Schuler? Okay, hearing none, I need a motion and a second to approve the policy approval consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we're on to action items. Approval to post middle school novels. I see Mrs. Murphy heading on up there, and Dr. Schuler, anything to start with?
No, I don't have anything in the introduction, I'm going to hand it right over to Mrs. Murphy.
Good evening. Tonight I have the opportunity to provide you information about the proposed middle school novel collection. I have three guiding questions for the presentation this evening. They are: Why is District 200 updating the middle school approved novel collection? How will the recommended novels expand our collection? How will the novels continue to be recommended for approval? We are going to start with the first one here, as to why we are updating our middle school approved novel collection. So I have a few slides to provide background. First and foremost, in 2020, we began working with our middle school teams to expand the collection of diverse texts. This was because on the Vision 2022 strategic plan, we had a goal that specifically said to provide experiences and instruction to develop students' appreciation of cultures and diversity. And we identified a way to do that, and that was through the idea of providing experiences that we describe as windows and mirrors. And as a reminder for the board and community about what this is, a mirror provides students with an opportunity to see themselves in what they are reading, and a window provides students an opportunity to learn about others through what they are reading. Some more information for you as a part of this novel process. The last time novels were brought to the Board of Education was in 2004 for fast-paced language arts, in 2006 for our regular language arts program. You can see here the number of books that are currently on that approved list for each area, 35 for fast-paced, 72 for regular language arts. And so this certainly means that the copyright of the books really doesn't go past the year 2000 presently. For those who are interested in seeing what the approved novels currently are, they are on the district website in the curriculum section within the middle school area. Additional background information, so after the novels were last approved by the Board of Education, there were changes at the state level with standards. The new Illinois learning standards were adopted in 2010. At the middle school level, professional learning communities, or PLCs, worked to develop new units of study aligned to these standards. With this work, texts were selected by buildings, building-level teams, and they were purchased with building funds. And those teams consisted of all types of staff members, from teachers that worked with the pace students to teachers that work with special, students in special education programming. The work was completed at the building level because of the lack of instructional leadership positions at the middle school. So tonight, you heard about the approval of a new middle school director, that is certainly something that we're very excited about. At the elementary level, we have coaches. At the high school level, we have department chairs, or we have assistant principals for curriculum. The novels that are being presented tonight are ones that have already been used by our middle school teams. By approving the novels for posting, then eventually coming back for approval, we would have the opportunity to purchase additional copies of these texts for usage at other buildings. Moving into our second guiding question, how will the recommended novels expand our collection? You can see here we listed out the various ways that that collection will be expanded by six points here, location, the time period, the genre, topics, characters, and authors will all be expanded with these proposed novels. In our last guiding question, how will the novels continue to be recommended for approval? We recognized through this work, we needed a better system for recommending novels for approval. We created a new procedure to allow our staff to recommend novels yearly for approval. This really would work similarly to how our textbook process works at the high school, and staff would have the opportunity yearly to make recommendations. The approval process would be layered, it'd include multiple readers, building-level approval, district-level approval, along with descriptions coming to how the text align to the English Language Arts standards and unit themes. So finally, tonight, we're making a recommendation to approve the posting of middle school novels for the 30 days of public review. As always, feedback will be shared with the Board of Education.
Questions or comments?
Listen, just as a quick reminder, the list of novels obviously is posted, but they are also physically present at the school service center if anybody wants to review any of the novels, correct?
Correct, Dr. Schuler, they will be available at the school service center.
Questions or comments from board members?
So from a process perspective, I'm not clear on why we're approving something that's already in use. Like, what's the purpose of the approval?
Yeah, because it should have been approved by the board, and I think a few of them were missed in the approval process.
Got it, okay.
So it was a little bit of cleanup and improvement of the process. So I think what brought us to this was the addition of the new novels through the diverse text study, and I think recognition and reviewing all of them, that there were some that had not been through this process with the board.
I really liked the summary in the, that's posted as well, I thought that was really well done.
Other questions or comments?
I do. I do, so the books on the list, so by building, do, can they, can teachers choose from that list which books they want to use in their classrooms, or do all four schools have to use all the same novels?
We ask that a PLC agrees upon the usage of the novels, and so different buildings can select from this approved list.
Okay, so Hubble, a Hubble ELA teacher may choose a couple different novels than the ELA teachers at Franklin, correct? Okay. And then, just to clarify too, so all these, and I think you've said this, but I just want to be clear, all these books have been used in the past. There's not new novels being presented here. These are all books that have been used in our classrooms. And have there been any concerns or issues with any of these novels?
No, have not. Mrs. Booton, can I add something to the first question you asked me? I do want to emphasize, the reason why staff have choice in what the novels that they can use, and they aren't an exact match across the district, is because the ultimate goal of English Language Arts is the standards and the transferable skills, that that can be met through multiple texts. The goal isn't the text. And so that's why it look, it can be, we can read different novels at the same grade level. We have the same core academic skills across all of our grade levels and similar courses.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, there, I know I had asked this question email, that there were some books that were removed from texts that had been used. And so I just, I just want to know if you could just comment on that, that why certain ones were taken off?
Absolutely. They have not officially been taken off of the approved list, but our team is proposing the removal of thirty-five books. Once we go through this process of adding these texts to the approved list, then they're recommending the removal of thirty-five books because they're books that are no longer of interest, really, for middle school students, are no longer really being used.
Okay. Sorry, I thought I had one more question and I lost it. Oh, if I think of it, I'll come back to it, but thank you.
I can ask a quick one if that buys you a little time. Just a very minor comment. The stating that books would include representation from Africa and India, I wonder whether maybe it'd be more appropriate to say which African nations, if it's combined in a sentence with a country instead of a continent and a country. Sometimes it looks like maybe we think Africa is, you know, one place.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I know what it was. I just want to clarify that, and I mean, I know what you mean, but I just, for the community that, when you said some novels didn't go through the process or very, I just, I want to just maybe clarify that it wasn't... Those books were purchased through whatever was the acceptable process at that time. It wasn't like someone went rogue and went and bought a bunch of books. I just want to make that very clear, that we just, we're setting in a new process, we're making sure everything goes through, and I just want to make that...
Correct.
Clear, okay.
Yes.
That was it.
Mrs. Blatner, I thought I saw you.
Just wanted to clarify, so going forward, before something is trialed in a classroom, it will be approved first?
Unless it's a piloting process, and we, we go through the process of communicating pilots to both the Board and to families.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, well, are you gonna, you asked a really good question. Are you gonna ask some of your questions about the whole classroom, small group, and books? Are you gonna, okay.
Anybody else before I, go ahead?
Yeah, I just have one simple question, just a clarification for myself. Are these books only aligned with the ELA curriculum? Because as I was reading through the list, it sure seemed like there were some books in there that might fit into a social studies curriculum as well. Are these kind of placed into a box for ELA teachers, or is there flexibility?
Our ELA teams have worked really hard to build knowledge for social studies topics in particular through the English Language Arts course. So they're really doing the job of supporting the social studies content through ELA.
Anybody else before I go? Okay, I was just gonna ask, with new social studies standards coming out, would that be another opportunity to be looking at books that can support that as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then just a few other questions, which I had asked Dr. Schuler when the agenda was posted. One of them being, these novels are used for whole class as well as small group.
That is correct.
And that staff would be using really only those books that are on that list versus maybe, you know, I remember back when I was a teacher, I could go out and purchase at that time, group, you know, collection of books and do different groups within my classroom. That's not, when it's directly being taught, that's not being done anymore. Am I right in that?
Correct, we're working to make sure any of the texts that are being used, if there is curriculum that is developed with the text, and we're requiring or mandating students read that text, especially if it's an extended text for a long period of time, that should go through the instructional materials process.
I think that was all my questions. Anybody else?
Melissa, just to follow up on that, is that true for high school curriculum, high school novels as well?
The high school novels have come to the Board much more frequently than the middle school lists. They've come to the Board as, most recently, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen.
I guess my question is following up on Chris. When she was a teacher, she could purchase something for a small group at the high school level. Is that true that it...
At the high, so in addition to, because there has been more of a Board approval process of our novels, a majority of the texts that our staff do use are on that Board-approved novel list. When there have been times that texts have not been on that usage, we always have a very clear process of that being communicated with families through a syllabus or other notifications for families.
Thank you.
And there would be a process within the building, correct, with like a department chair or somebody who's also kind of overseeing that?
That is correct.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the posting of the middle school novel list for community review as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton?
Second.
Second by Dr. Yaboa. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next up is the approval of the Vision 2026 strategic plan. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, so in your, your green folders, there are three documents associated with this, with the strategic plan. Two of the documents are not new information for the Board. One, you've seen several times, that being the Vision 2026 strategy chart. The second document, we discussed at a committee, or committee of the whole meeting, that being the list of dashboard metrics. The third document that's included that was a little bit newer was that I did include a document with a proposed really monitoring structure at the Board level. So every big-picture strategy that is on your strategic plan is assigned to one of the Board committees to continue to oversee that work over the next, next four-year period of time. Again, that, that element of this doesn't really require approval, but I just wanted to make it very, very clear, not only what the work is, how the work is being monitored, but certainly at the Board level where the oversight of the key strategies are gonna sit. So I very much recommend to the Board approval of the strategic plan documents this evening. Again, these have been through lots of rounds of community input, both staff and community level, and we're certainly excited and proud to continue the work on these, kind of the key strategic plan initiatives.
So before we, before I ask for questions, I just want to clarify for Board members, the Board committees here. As you can see, there is a teaching and learning slash SEL. We're looking to, both Dr. Schuler and I looked at other surrounding districts as well as looking at our own, and felt like teaching and learning and SEL, it's all kinds of learning could be grouped into one committee. If you, if Board members remember, the SEL committee was added as a temporary committee? I'm not sure, Mr. Paulson, how we... Ad hoc, thank you, that's the correct language, to fit a need at that time. But putting some, put both of the learning committees maybe together as one committee. So in July, Mr. Hanlon and I have been talking about committee assignments. We decided to wait until July. One of the reasons being, we have our Board self-evaluation at the end of the month. We have IASB here, kind of talking about the purpose of committees and Board member roles in regard to committees. And so we'll wait until July before we, we approve that as well. So any questions or comments, though, regarding the strategic plan?
I have one. I just want to make sure it's clear that the, I believe it's understood, I just don't think it's clear on this document, that the equity and proactive practices, really, that work really does encompass every area with a lens. And so it looks like it's kind of like its own separate thing in some of these bullet points, but really it could, it could address HR policy as well. So kind of making sure we attend to all aspects of school governance through an equity proactive practices lens, rather than narrowing it to certain bullet points.
That's a good point. Other questions or comments?
On the dashboard metric section, again, just with the metric of freshman on track. So I know we're using the ISB metric here on the dashboard. Can we still access our district definition of freshman on track? Like, instead of the five credits per year, like how many freshmen have achieved six credits per year so they're truly on track for our district expectations? So maybe it's not part of the dashboard, but can we still receive that information?
Sure, you're asking specifically for additional information just on students that may meet the ISB requirement but be behind our requirement.
Correct, yep.
We can certainly provide that information to the, to the Board. I know Ms. Blatner asked that, that question. I think where possible, when data points are being reported publicly by ISB on our district report card, I think there is some inconsistency if we try to report the same metric but with a different standard that then doesn't match what somebody's gonna find if they go and they drill into that. But I understand the concern. Our Board locally has a graduation requirement that exceeds what ISB requires in school code. So a student can not be eligible for a diploma from District 200, yet technically still meet the state minimum requirement. So just, just for clarity, when we report that data point, certainly we can, we can look at how we can report if there are students that are perhaps meeting the ISB requirement but cusp on our requirement.
Correct, thank you.
Mr. Paulson, did you have a question?
Sure, I'll start with a short story. I was recently spent some time with an administrator in one of our benchmark districts. I mean, somehow we got onto the topic of strategic planning, and he was sharing that they had spent a lot of time looking at our strategic plan and our dashboard, and really appreciated the detail and everything that went into it. So that made me feel like a, kind of a validation from an outside peer perspective. So I commend the administration in, in what we've been through in the past, and as well as getting to this point. I talked a lot about the dashboard in the past, and I think that's equally important. So we haven't really talked about the design of the dashboard, and so I'll reiterate some of the key points that I think are important there as we get to that next step. I'm really interested in how, how the metrics are used to point us to action in certain areas. That's, it's one thing to have the metric, but if it doesn't inform us and lead us to a path or an alternate path, that's, that's equally, that's important. It's also important that informs our community how we're doing, so how, how that's viewed and used by our community to kind of hold us accountable is important. And then, and then also at the same time, serving as a gateway to information, some level of transparency. So, you know, if somebody wants to learn more about our assessment process, I believe the dashboard should be or could be a venue to get to that information. So I think those three points of how we design the dashboard and then portray that and make it available to our community is, is important. You know, I think the other thing that's gonna be super critical, especially what we've been through the last two years, is how we establish a new baseline for some of these metrics that, you know, as we get into this new strategic vision and, and the new metrics that we're looking at, but how we get to a point of a new baseline is gonna be super important. So those are, that's some of my thoughts going into this, which are more forward-looking thoughts. Again, I really appreciate that we spent a lot of time getting to this and all these different aspects. So thank you for the extensive work and the, and the continually bringing this to the Board for feedback.
Other questions or comments from Board members? Okay, hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the Vision 2026 strategic plan as presented. Moved by Mr. Hanlon?
Second.
Was that Mrs. Blatner? Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next up is approval to post the elementary, middle, high school student handbook updates for 2022, 2023. I see Dr. Kyle heading on up there.
Yes, our resident expert in District 200 dress codes has found his way to the podium, so Dr. Kyle.
Thanks for that great introduction, I appreciate it. Members of the Board, thank you for giving me this opportunity to kind of speak about the process when we talk about handbook revisions. We actually started this back in January. I had a team of Joe Kish, Melissa Calvert, Julie Pavlini, Anthony Crespo, and myself that met almost weekly, we probably put twelve or thirteen meetings in for various topics. One of them, Dr. Schuler did mention dress code. But what we looked at for the revisions for next year's handbooks, one of the things we look at is always Board of Education policy updates. Press Policy 108 had a lot of updates this year. So many of them you will see in the updates that are being presented to be posted. Dress code, we viewed our original dress code through the Title IX lens. So we spent a lot of time becoming experts in dress code and looking at that process. We also, this year, unlike the last two years, very little IDPH and CDC updates, which is a good thing. Discipline updates, things that might make people's lives easier that work with discipline. We also got feedback from the dress code, from the CAC and the SEL Subcommittee. We had a feedback from elementary principals and secondary administrators on the entire handbook changes. We also presented the dress code to EC-12 presentation. And we also asked some middle school and high school students in particular about the dress code. Just look at it, give us some feedback. We got some really solid feedback from the students. We also, one piece that I like to do is, the Illinois Principal Association has a model handbook review. So I want to make sure what we're updating is the right things to update. So I check what we're doing with what they're doing, and that's very helpful. I know I spoke a lot, but what I'm requesting from the Board is that we're able to post the 22, 23 handbook changes for public review.
Questions or comments from Board members? I know I do, but I'll let you guys go first.
I just want to say thank you for the work on the dress code since I sent you on that journey. I really appreciate it, and I think it's greatly improved and gives our students more flexibility and probably know much more about straps and bands and all kinds of things than you would like to. But, but I think it's really important, and I just want to say I'm very, very appreciative of the work. And, and I think this really addresses a lot of things that, that I was hoping it would address. My only question would be about an athletic dress code, because I know in the, that you mentioned that in, or not mentioned, but it is stated that, that students cannot wear a sports bra to school, which I support, which I agree with. But that, I just want to clarify, that's only for the school day, at least at the moment? And is there something in development for athletics, or how will that work?
Yeah, we talked about working with both athletic directors of the high school on what is acceptable and what's not.
what is acceptable and what's not after school. We really have focused our energy on what's acceptable during the school hours. But our work would be working with the both athletic directors on that.
Okay. And then I guess, so then is the plan to develop something that would be consistent with, with the schools and be communicated to students or how?
Yeah, the step would be to talk to both athletic directors and see what they're seeing and talk through that and say what's acceptable and make sure that both high schools are, you know, consistent with what they accept.
Okay. So will there be something written or no?
I'm not planning anything written.
Okay.
The way I was looking at doing it is talking to both athletic directors.
Yeah, okay.
And sharing what the new policy is and talking to them about what they see so they could talk to their coaches. There's a process that would go through.
Okay.
It wasn't thinking written.
Okay.
So let me just be really clear on the, the question so that Dr. Kyle, you're, I think hearing that, the, I, I think the question is if there are situations where there's an exception to the dress code, meaning what's allowed during the school day or what is not allowed during the school day is allowed as part of an athletic piece, will that be clearly communicated and will that be consistent across the two high schools?
Yes.
And in, in that situation, can we share that with the, the board at a future meeting? Again, if there is any exception to the dress code specifically around, and again, I think most common situation would be students as they're running long distance, sometimes the, the standard of dress as kids are out running five or six miles and cross-country may vary a little bit from where it, what it is on campus in our building. But if that's the case, we will clearly communicate that and make sure it's consistent across the two buildings.
Okay.
We can do that.
Other questions or comments?
I had one comment.
Yep.
More particularly for the elementary dress code, when it says students cannot wear compression vests, and I know I asked for a little bit of the, an explanation on that and I didn't follow or time-wise, just wanted to clarify, like there are some younger students who do wear compression vest garments. And this may, a parent may think that wasn't allowed, by the way, it's written. So I don't know if there's, I don't know how many elementary parents are scouring the, the wording, but.
Gotcha. So I think, let me just make sure that, the concern would be perhaps a student that is wearing some type of compression clothing potentially for a therapeutic.
Correct.
Need that we, yeah, the, the goal is not to restrict a student that, that is in that situation. And so one, appreciate that, that handbook. Let's make sure we review that just to make sure what we're, what we're restricting isn't keeping a, a student from being able to access a therapeutic need.
Thank you. That's all.
Anything else? Well, I want to say thank you. This handbook has been, as, as some of the board members know, has been an area that has been, I've been passionate about. I, we would not be at this point of only being able to, or only really seeing updates if it wasn't for the hard work that I know Erica and you have done in the past couple of years to get our handbook so cleaned up and ready to go. The other piece that I think is really important for community and even, even board members to understand, if you go back to the original dress code that was presented to us, I don't, few months back, it's not the same as what's in here because you actually, you took the feedback that you got. I was at that CAC meeting, there was a lot of feedback there. I know students have given feedback, other people have given feedback, and you took the feedback and it changed. And I think that's important for everybody to understand that when something is proposed to us and you say you're going out for, for community feedback, that we do listen as a district to that community feedback and make changes as needed. And so I do appreciate that, that piece in there, especially that you took student feedback as, student feedback as well. So anything else that?
Just one quick question. So we're, we're posting this for public review and comment. Are we required to post handbooks or is that just our practice?
That's been our practice because the handbook is a, a function of board policy. So once approved, it really is an, an approved extension to board policy. So we've always followed the same process, meaning we make it publicly available. Again, just, just to be really clear in this, that not general public, but we, we've sought extensive feedback on the, on the handbook piece, but this has just been the district practice. We're not required to do it. The only thing we're required to do by law is actually have a parent review committee that does give us feedback, that being what CAC does.
Anything else?
Hearing none, I'm going to make the motion to approve the posting of the high school, middle school and elementary handbooks as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Ms. Cranfree?
Yes.
Ms. Booton?
Yes.
Ms. Blatner?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Dr. Yvonne?
Yes.
Okay. Oral reports. I see Mrs. Laocino heading up there, the 2022, 2023 Community Engagement Planning.
Thank you very much. So tonight, our goal is to recap our focus and efforts and community engagement for the prior school year and then preview a draft of the 22, 23 school year. And again, I want to reiterate that what's being shared with the board tonight is simply a draft and this is an opportunity for us to gather feedback from you too as well. So you'll recall from previous Vision 2022, kind of what we were operating under, our community engagement commitment to continuously engage our community to determine its priorities, foster partnerships and promote learning. And I think what you'll see in Vision 2026 is that that has not changed so, so much. So our areas of focus this year, you always put out a good plan and then life happens. And so last year, we still kind of found ourselves in a little bit of a period where we were a lot of reactive communications, reactive engagement with our community, being as proactive as possible, but maybe not always focusing our communications efforts on where we intended to. But that took up a, a good amount of time. But we still did have those really important meetings, checkpoints with our key community partners, which really allowed us to collectively as a community, get through the pandemic and work together to support all of the families that live in our communities. And so you'll see there, some of our key community partners that we continue to have a great relationship with. We finalized our Portrait of a Graduate work and that was really both an internal and external engagement process. And it was really, well, it was led by Dr. Solagi, who did an incredible job with that, really a team and community-wide effort. And so you'll see here, just as a reminder to the board, all the various ways that we engaged our community over, really over two, two and a half years in that process, which led us into, allowing us to engage our community around what you just approved tonight, our Vision 2026. So we held, we held engagement and feedback opportunities with our district leadership teams. Our principals then took the show on the road and presented at every single one of our staff meetings and at our transition program and gathered staff feedback for us. We held two open community meetings for our community to provide feedback. We ran it through our Citizens Advisory Committee, PTA Council, the Student Excellence Foundation. We put together a video and made available for our community, a virtual engagement opportunity and online feedback and certainly presented to the board, both at your regular meetings and your committee meetings. But I just think this shows just an incredible amount of, between Portrait of a Graduate this school year and then Vision 2026, we certainly had an opportunity to get in front of a lot of people and hear a lot of different perspectives. And so while we may not have, we may have been a little bit more reactive and distracted in some of that, I think this is a huge testament to the board and the district's commitment to still following through on those engagement opportunities because demonstrating to the community that we really do want to hear from you and our planning processes truly a community-wide effort. The Essential Needs Fund was where we spent a lot of our time too. And so just to remind the board, the community, our Student Excellence Foundation has been, is about to celebrate their 30th year. And when the pandemic hit, we saw a lot of incredible need in our community, especially in the area at first in terms of food insecurity. And so our foundation stepped up right away and started raising funds for mobile food pantries, other food resources for families. And this school year, they established that as a permanent fund within their foundation. And they can, it continues to be very successful to support, like I said, food insecurity needs, supplies and backpacks, personal items from students, really in the effort to help, like a lot of times we talk about here in the district, let's remove any barrier we possibly can to make sure that our kids can come to school and learn and be engaged and connected and not have to worry about some of those barriers that stand in their way. And so the district has really helped be, been a conduit to some of those, like shuffling, not shuffling, but moving of resources. So I just want to say thank you so much to the foundation for providing this ongoing now resource for our families in District 200. So what we also learned still is that social media continues to be the most powerful way for us to share our story. When we celebrate our students and staff, we've seen a lot of staff posts in the past couple of days, they're doing very well on social media, we are able to keep our community connected. We've had posts on recently of staff members who've retired after 30-plus years and there's, you know, people commenting on there. I remember I had them for my second grade teacher 25 years ago. And so it's just a great way to reconnect people and keep them connected. And so because we know social media gives us such a great opportunity to tell our story, we can never give up the opportunity to say something great about our schools. And you'll see in our next year's plan, social media is going to continue to be a, a focus area for us. I wanted to show you this, so I pulled this stat from, just to further illustrate the power of social media. So in the last month, our Facebook posts have reached 32,000 individuals. That's, that's a huge reach. That's more than any email that we push out could ever get. On Instagram, we reached over 2,600 individuals. And again, that's just been in the last month. This past school year, we added a new feature, Throwback Thursday, and I have to give a lot of credit to Mary Ann Gudmundsen in my office. We often joke that she's like our resident historian in the district. She's been with us over, over 20-some years. And she loves going through our yearbooks. And so it started out this school year, she'd just pick a yearbook and we'd kind of figure out what, what, what year we're going to go with, which school we're going to go with, because we've got a number of high schools throughout the years that we can pick. And just taking old yearbook photos and making them into a collage and just happy Throwback Thursday. And you'll see on the one on the right, that single post reached 1,400 individuals and, 14,000, I'm sorry, individuals. The one on the left was most recently last Thursday. That post went nuts. There was over 300-plus comments just in like five days, which may not seem like a lot, but to me, it's a really, really big deal. We reached almost nine, and I pulled this yesterday, we reached almost 9,000 individuals who saw that post and engaged either with a comment or something, over 2,200 people. And so that's, that's a pretty big deal, that social media. I, I share this with you because I think it's important for you to know where in community engagement, we're spending our time and this is clearly a valued use of time. So this was just, in the last 90 days, our tweets earned over almost 114,000 individual impressions. That's huge. So I think each of our platforms allows us to have different opportunity. But again, I just share these with you so you understand just the value and of our social media. So you'll recall last year, what we affectionately called as our placemat, where we broke out our four kind of strategies, broke it out by quarter. We condensed that and focused on a monthly engagement and communications focus while still including all the important opportunities that we've come to, come to be kind of tradition routine with our community engagement efforts. And this year, it's slightly restructured to align better with our new Vision 2026. So I think now we're going to switch over to the other document that you have in your green folders too. I did not do a slide deck for this, but I thought we could just kind of talk through it, if that's okay. So again, you'll see at the top, this is very much in draft form and I had hoped to get some feedback from the board either tonight or as you think about it in the coming days. So you'll see at the top, those, I pulled those directly from the Vision 2026 plan, our key strategies to engage our community on an ongoing basis to determine its priorities, foster partnerships and promote learning. You'll see several of the kind of high-level tactics that we have identified in order for us to hit at that strategy. Our second, community engagement-focused strategy, maintain and enhance a positive organizational culture. And really, as it relates to, actually, I could have, I didn't have to gray out all the other two ones of those, but those, those are the tactics underneath, kind of high level on how we will hope to achieve that strategy. So I mentioned before, we continue to maintain a strong relationship with the Student Excellence Foundation. Both myself and Dr. Schuler represent kind of like the liaison between the foundation and the district. In addition to Essential Needs Fund, I just have to give a shout out to the foundation. They really brought a lot back this year too. We had our Celebrate Our Stars event over at Wheaton North and it's a great opportunity for the community to come together, recognize our staff, but also recognize what they, a new Stars of the Week program that they implemented where they recognized stars from across our district. And it's really a great way to hear from our families about the great things our staff are doing and then celebrate them and celebrate our staff in that way. So I want to thank the foundation for that, in addition to all the incredible grants and other opportunities they provide. We continue to support all of our PTAs and our PTA Council. I was just at their crossover breakfast where they go from one PTA Council to the next and sharing ideas and planning for the next school year. And they are a very well-oiled machine, as Chris probably knows, and we've got a great school year ahead of us on the PTA front. We move down to our engagement opportunities. So I kind of, I should say, I broke this out into partnerships, engagement opportunities, events, and then communications, which is more communications following more of kind of like one-way communications. The others are kind of more like two-way communications, engagement opportunities. So some board members will recall several years ago, as part of our community engagement plan and an effort to bring people into our schools, we developed a community calendar. And that calendar was a series of events at both of our high schools that really focused mostly on performing arts-type opportunities to put out to the community. Here's when the plays are happening at our two high schools. Here's when the art shows are happening at our high schools. Here's when the musicals are happening. To really give our community an opportunity to come in and, and see what our kids have to offer. You heard Mr. Rutledge talking tonight about attending plays at Wheaton North High School. We really wanted to use that as a really great communication tool to take to, especially like our senior living facilities. We have previously arranged for like the bus from Belmont Village on Geneva to come and bring a group to see plays at Wheaton North and gave them backdoor access so that it was easy for them to get into their seats. And we're really looking forward to bringing that community calendar back and re-engaging those groups. We, as we talked about tonight, we continue to utilize our Citizens Advisory Committee as an opportunity to hear feedback from our community and really have that really, really informative two-way dialogue for staff to be able to share information and then hear reaction, feedback from our community. We will continue to work through some parent engagement through educational opportunities, including our bilingual parent advisory council. I know Dr. Schuler had a chance to attend our, our close-out year community partners meeting and we had just such a great conversation between World Relief, Marion Park, the district, our multilingual learner department was there, and it was just a great way to like problem solve, like, hey, we're running into staffing shortage here, or hey, I'm struggling to find a camp for 50 newcomers that just came. They have nothing to do this summer. Like what resources can, we can provide for them? And actually, the foundation was there too and talked about how can we use some of those essential needs dollars to provide some summer enrichment opportunities for kids in the community, our students that need it. And so that community partners resort, that community partners meeting continues to be like just such an invaluable resource and opportunity for us to just collaborate and share and again, just to strengthen what we're able to provide for our families. I mentioned re-engaging our senior living facilities, really looking forward to that. I think we made some good progress for the pandemic and then for obvious reasons, had to put some of those on pause. We've recently established kind of just super organically, it used to be just occasionally in the summer, I have a lunch meeting with the park district and the library and maybe the chamber in the city. and the library, and maybe the Chamber and the city. And we really started to formalize that because we saw value in that group coming together. And so we've named ourselves the Partners in Progress and how we can, you'll see the groups listed there, the Wheaton Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Wheaton Association, Wheaton Library, Wheaton Park District, and the City of Wheaton. How can we continue to partner and kind of really like combine our calendars to make sure that we're enhancing and supporting one another without duplicating things? And so I was actually just on the call this afternoon with Chris Miller. He's a show choir director at Wheaton Warrenville South, and the Downtown Wheaton Association Director, Allison Orr. And I think we're going to start, we're going to do three Tuesdays, one in June, one in July, and one in August. Tuesday Tiger Tunes, where they're going to be for an hour and a half under the tents on Hale Street. And they're going to move, there's like three central locations. And Mr. Miller is going to play, and we're going to get some students out there, too. And they're just going to provide entertainment for the community. And it allows our kids to really get out there. But it also brings parents to come and watch their kids and eat dinner in downtown Wheaton on Tuesday night, where maybe not as heavily trafficked, but it's such a great opportunity. So that's just one new engagement opportunity that we've got, but that because without that structured partner, partnership in place, we're able to really make things happen on a quicker basis. We started, thanks to Charlie for helping us get this started, the Wheaton Police Department came to us a couple of months ago. They started last summer a neighborhood roll call, where they would pick various places in the community and go out and just let the community members know ahead of time, hey, the Wheaton Police is going to be at Seven Gables Park or Memorial Park. Come out and talk to us and hear any updates in the community. And they asked us this year, hey, can we come out and hold a roll call at each one of your Wheaton Elementary Schools? And so we've started that. We had one at Weasbrooke last week. There was one at Washington last night. And I think between those two events, there were probably at least almost 200 people that came out between the two. And that's not to include the ones that they've gotten out. But it's a great way for us to partner. And so they'll talk about kind of on their front, like safety concerns in the area, maybe traffic issues. But then it gives us an opportunity, someone from our safety committee is at each one of these, to talk about and answer any questions about how, you know, how we have fully secure entrances at all of our schools now, what we're, talk about Alice, answer any questions about school safety. So that started with a really high turnout. That will continue throughout the summer months. And actually, we've been, I know Charlie's been in conversations with Warrenville Park District, or Warrenville Police. They do a roll call, but we'll look to eventually at some point have them out at our Warrenville schools, although Johnson is probably not a good one this year because there will be no playground for the kids to play on when they come to the roll call. So, moving over to the next page, events. We will continue kind of our, what I think kind of called state of our schools, but I'm liking a little bit of the term, the year in preview, kind of previewing. So you've seen, kind of, this is the proposed community engagement work plan, proposed SEL work plan, proposed student learning facilities. So when you think of it, what was our state of the schools roadshow, right? So we'll still have our elected officials breakfast. We'll still get to the Rotary Clubs, the Lions Clubs, the Chambers of Commerce, the Realtors, to share with them what we've got, what we've got planned for the school year, and what we're working on in District 200. And then looking to spring of '23 to host some type of an open format, community engagement opportunity, do a year in review of the past school year, and then potentially preview also the coming school year, and what really, what are our work plans and how are they tied to our Vision 2026? In terms of the communications, talked a little bit about tonight, sort of what Ms. Blatner was asking about in terms of dashboard. We're working on a communications plan surrounding Vision 2026. We've got to revamp the section of our website, definitely have to revamp our dashboard. I've been working with Mr. Spencer on some different software opportunities so that we can make things a little bit more, I don't know if interactive is the right term, but just use some different visual depictions of our metrics. But then also, how can we, when we have that Vision 2026 on our website, how can we offer some definitions of some of those kind of more educationally-type terms, learning acceleration, what does that mean? Or balanced assessment system, what does that mean? So we know that that's something that we're working on this year. So more of that is to come for the board. One area, I don't necessarily like the term chain of command, but I've been trying to come up with a different terminology for this. So we've seen a number of other districts do this. And I think the pandemic sort of exacerbated a little bit of a need for some type of this resource. It's really a document that identifies for our community and our parents. If you have a question or concern about a particular topic, who do you go to for that question? We really saw a lot of direct communication going straight to the Board of Education this year. And so how can we kind of reset that? Reset that, not chain of command, maybe chain of communication is a better way to put it, so that if you've got a concern about something happening in your kid's classroom, your classroom teacher is the first point of contact. And then how do things escalate? Or if they are district-level topics, how do they know to go to Chris versus Charlie, or Melissa, or Brian, or Jason, or me, or Dr. Schuler, and what warrants a board email? Certainly, we keep that line of communication open to anybody in the community through the board and the district, but really to re-establish, what does that chain of communication look like? And so that's a resource that we're going to work on developing. And then you'll notice on Vision 2026 Strategic Plan, again, it's a four-year plan, is to conduct a communications audit. And so my goal for this school year is to really spend some time researching and potentially identifying an outside partner to work with to conduct that audit. And so what is a communications audit? It's really an opportunity for us to identify, how does our, how do all of our key stakeholders, our internal community, our external community, what's the best way for us to engage with them and communicate with them? Everybody's got different preferences. And I think we've got a really, we're coming off at a really great opportunity to evaluate that. And so it's a great opportunity for us to learn and understand. And so, like I said, Vision 2026 is a four-year plan. And so the goal for this year is part of the work plan, unless the board has additional feedback, is to really spend this school year researching and identifying a vendor for a future audit. And then again, I'm not going to read through the next several bullet points, but the only thing that I will say is that, as I started tonight, saying that the past two school years, we spent a lot of our efforts focused on a lot of reactive communications. I am so excited to start bringing back our Focus on Learning newsletter that really highlights the great teaching and learning and student experiences, staff experiences happening in the district. And so looking forward to getting back to more of those proactive celebratory stories this coming school year. And really, also, we, again, were reminded tonight by some of the slides, on the power of social media is every new higher orientation I go to, and I ask teachers, please start the school's social media account. I don't care what platform it is. If you're on Twitter, you're on Instagram, you're on Facebook, whatever platform you're on, I'm a parent, I'm going to join that platform because I want to see posts about my kid. And so we go to new hire and ask staff to start a social media account, and also really working with our principals to, if they're not already good social media users, how can we find ways for you, to make it easy for you to use social media to tell the story of your school? And I should have said, sorry, the highlighted areas are kind of newer opportunities that you don't necessarily see, you haven't seen probably before. And then I simply updated on the next page, it's really kind of tied it really to what has been like your board, your board topics for each meeting month. And so those will be topics that will be covered primarily in the board highlights emails that go out following these meetings. And that kind of follows our similar schedule from last year. And if it's, is it okay if I, I don't think we need to go through this necessarily month by month as it follows the board topic calendar. So I would love to hear any questions or feedback that you may have.
Anyone want to start?
I'll start. First, thank you, as always. I think you do an amazing job overall, so I just want to say that. For, I'm just going to kind of start at the top and go down. With the positive organizational culture, I know that when the last employee morale survey went out, that I believe it was like 53% participation in that. And I guess I would like to see something that helps increase that participation, so we get a better sense of what our staff are feeling and what they're going through. I know, just reading, doing a lot of reading, you know, of news and everything, that this has been a very, very difficult year for a couple of years, but this year in particular for our teachers. And I just, I just really want to make sure we're getting a full picture of what our staff are feeling and going through, and maybe digging into why more teachers aren't, and more staff aren't filling out the survey, you know, and trying to figure that out.
Go ahead.
Okay. The engagement opportunities, I love the Partners in Progress Engagement Group. I think that's great. I don't know if there's an opportunity to involve somebody from Warrenville in that, just, you know, because we're Wheaton Warrenville, but, yeah, but I think that's a great start. And I like that you're making that more of a regular issue. And then in the back on the communications, I just want to, I really, really like the, I'll go with your, the chain of communication resource. I think that's hugely important. That's just something, I feel like even before the pandemic, there's just something I've just heard in general, that people don't know where to go. And, and I mean, I will be very honest, this is like a new high school parent, like I was like, sometimes like, I mean, I'm on the board. And I was like, I'm not sure where to go, you know? And so I think that's really important. And I would make the suggestion that, and again, I don't know what this looks like in your head, but it, but that it not just be like a list, you know, like teacher, assistant principal, principal, kind of thing. But make, you know, add in some soft elements that help build that trust with parents and their buildings. And I, because I think we've seen some deterioration of that over the past couple of years. So just building up that, you know, and again, I'm just making this up, you know, we're here for you. We want to know what your concerns are. We want to know what your issues are. You know, please talk to your teacher first. This is who spends the most time with your child and knows your child. Do you know what I mean? Like sort of building a little, just a little bit of a narrative around it to help build that trust with parents, and that they feel good about going through those steps of, you know, who to talk to about what. And I think that's also an opportunity for education to the community and to parents about what the Board of Education does versus what the administration and operations is responsible for. Because I think, to your point, people are emailing the board thinking we're the board, like the seven of us, or what, or who handles this issue? And it's not. It's the administration, you know? And I know sometimes parents are like, board, I just want you to be aware of this. But I think sometimes people contact the board thinking we're the ones who are going to fix something in the classroom. And, you know, and that's not what, A, not, I'm not just saying A Board of Education does. So I think there's an opportunity there to, over time, for some, some learning and helpfulness to the community about the differentiation there. And then the last thing I'll say about that is that I would like to see, if possible, something with that chain of communication for our internal staff. Because that's another thing I've heard over the years, is that even sometimes our staff aren't sure who to go to, you know? And it's something, that could be something as easy as something posted in lunchrooms in the buildings or something like that about who, what the positions are. But I just know that some, I'll be honest, sometimes I've asked teachers, do you know who your assistant superintendent is? And they don't always know. And so, and I mean, that could be an individual thing, but I feel like I've heard it enough that I'm not sure that that isn't being communicated enough or properly. You know, I don't know how, I don't know how that's communicated. It's just in an onboarding process, or, but maybe it's just something yearly that is reiterated to staff and how to, how they can talk to somebody about an issue, and, you know, and that kind of thing. Again, building that trust internally, that our culture is, you know, we want to try to help solve your, solve problems, kind of thing. So I think that's a, for me, that, before I even knew what you were going to say, that was like the one item I was going to bring up. So I was really happy to see it on the list, that I just think that communication piece of how people can communicate to the district, whether it's parents or staff. So I'm really excited to see that. But overall, I think it's a really great job. So thank you.
Other questions or comments for Erica? Mr. Paulson?
Just, you know, I appreciate the focus we've worked on over the last year. You know, as you mentioned, it was, it got pretty unwieldy, and the playbook that we had, the placemat. And so I appreciate the, really focusing on these four areas. And I think we can, done great. We can always, I think this continued enhanced focus will allow us to get, take even more steps and improve and connect with people in the right way. So I appreciate that.
Other questions or comments? Mrs. Blatner?
Thank you, Erica. I appreciate so much of what I see here. The one question I had was if, for the strategy, provide the community with a window into schools by utilizing the voices of our students. Is that something that will develop, like getting specific student voices, or is it more of a general? I guess what I'm asking is, will we be seeking individual students in some way, or is it just like a general, here's what our students are doing? Does that make sense?
A little bit of both. Before, I know we're all here, sick of hearing about before the pandemic. But before the pandemic, we really did start doing, on a really regular basis, a lot of like Facebook Live or YouTube Live, and really where we got to hear from the mouths of the kids. And so that's when I, when we say that, that's, I should have clarified, that using social media and the voices of our children to allow them to tell us, what are they doing at school? What are they learning? So yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions or comments?
Just to reiterate Susan's point about the inclusion of Warrenville, the expansion of Warrenville. I think it's really critical, to a critical community. And then, I don't know if it's possible, but as we were going through a few months back, FLESS and everything else, some multilingual tweets or posts wouldn't hurt either, right? I think that'd be fantastic to emphasize the programs we are running in our schools.
Anybody else? Okay.
Just a couple of comments. And would love to see Winfield, if possible, for Pleasant Hill, to do a neighborhood, neighborhood. I love that idea to bring those to our communities. And I'm glad that they've been well-received. I think, Erica, you do such a nice, comprehensive plan to touch so many areas. And the thing that I'm the most excited about is our students and learning is back as our, as our main focus. I, you know, I think that's, that in and of itself tells the story. And I look forward to your Facebook Lives again with students. You know, I go back to like incubator and things that you've done in the, I think I was at Madison one day, and you were in their problem-solving room, or whatever that was, the kids were in there just designing. And it's just, it's so fun to, it's so fun to see and to, and to watch those. So love that the focus is truly moving, moving back to kids. Question in regards to the audit, I guess I'm, is that to look at how we are communicating? I'm just trying to understand what that looks like.
It'll involve some survey processes and asking community members to complete some surveys, both their internal and external community, to do some kind of like test reaches on certain things, like what's doing well, what's not doing well, and to really provide some concrete feedback on, these are things that you need to focus on, and these are things that you can probably not focus on.
And I said to Erica earlier today, your latest post about the first grade teacher was one of my favorite things, because not only did I remember, it got me to have a conversation with my mom. And we talked about what it was like back when I was in first grade. My mom, I think, was PTA president back then. And, you know, it was, it was just a fun opportunity to think back and reflect. And so I like those fun posts and the Throwbacks Thursdays that you've been doing. So, thank you. Okay. Next up, a discussion item of the updated enrollment projection.
Okay. Next up is discussion item of the updated enrollment projections report.
Dr. O'Keefe is coming up to the podium. I just, I want to remind the Board as Dr. O'Keefe gives you the, the update from the most recent one. So the district has actually worked with Dr. Casarda for a number of years. I think this is at least the third version of the enrollment projections that he's done. And he typically recommends that about every five years that those enrollment projections be updated. So we were due, we did a mini version of an update a little over a year ago, based on some of the development at Warrenville, and especially in Naperville, that kind of Nokia property. We did a mini version, but we were due for kind of a full update of our enrollment projections. So Dr. O'Keefe, I'll hand it to you.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. As in typical fashion, the business office follows up all other presentations, and we'll spend the next two hours talking about numbers, because that's what we love doing at the end of meetings. So Dr. Schuler did a great introduction. We were at the point now to take a look at where we're at and potentially where we could be in the future, especially since we're thinking long term in terms of our facilities and capital structures. So we, we met with the Facilities Committee meeting just a few weeks ago to go through this, provide just a bit of general context and overview, a quick description of what the series are that Dr. Casarda uses, and then just some highlights about where potentially things could go in terms of enrollment within our schools. So you do have the document that talks about really four main areas of a general overview. As Dr. Schuler mentioned, this is the first time we've actually had this data updated for the district in five years. One of the interesting pieces of information, just high level, that came out of the documentation, back in the 2001, 2002 school year, we had almost 14,400 students. At the beginning of last school year, we were down to about 11,700 students. The biggest drop, if you're just looking at some patterns over the years in terms of migration out of the district, occurred between September of 2019 and summer of 2020, excuse me, September of 2020, obviously in the main part, in middle of the pandemic, before pandemic, during pandemic. Certainly that had some contributions to that migration out. And then as Dr. Casarda uses specifically, we, we've got a greater number of families with diverse family backgrounds. So back in 2000, roughly 15% of our student population came from a diverse family background. And that is specifically identified, that definition is laid out on page three of the 197-page document that you have access to. And then in 2021, we had reached just about a 37%, just about 37% of our students come specifically from diverse backgrounds. So just, you know, changes in our overall numbers of total students, interesting point of a fairly, a small migration of students out during the pandemic, and then certainly a change in the types of students that we're serving. What Dr. Casarda does within his projections is he puts out three series to consider. Series B, just look at that as, as our potential baseline. So that's assuming that fertility rates remain stable for a period of five years, that future new residential development, where possible, and turnover existing housing units in each of the different attendance areas to families with preschool or school-aged children occur as anticipated for a tenure period. And then he looks at Series A, which is 15% less than anticipated, so 15% less than Series B. And then Series C is 15% more than Series B. So really kind of a baseline and maybe a ceiling on potentially where things could be. On pages two and three of that three-page handout that you have access to, these are just a breakdown of what those projections look like by school. And the one, the one note that I'll share with, it seems, especially with more significant development south of Roosevelt, that we will be in a fairly stable pattern from an enrollment perspective, with maybe even an uptick in some areas on the south end. But he's noted in his information that what, something we'll have to look out for and certainly make sure that we're paying attention to on an annual basis, is there, there could be a drop in, in terms of overall student enrollment on the north end. Obviously, there's a lot of movement throughout the district, and there has been from a residential perspective with housing now for almost a year. So it's hard to say whether or not any of these specific series is going to be a deadlock set on where we're going to end up being. But obviously, if there are some projections that look at potentially some dips in enrollment on the north side, what we're doing with our facilities, how we're managing our resources from a teaching and learning perspective, have to be taken into account. And it's something we'll make sure that we're monitoring year over year. Questions about the data discussion you'd like to have?
Questions or comments for Dr. O'Keefe? Mr. Paulson?
Do you have questions?
No, you go first.
Okay. Well, we talked about this, we reviewed this at the Facility Committee meeting a few weeks ago. And a couple kind of key conversations that came up were just myself and Mrs. Crabtree and the community member that was there, just amazed at the number of new families with young kids moving into our district. And, excuse me, kind of makes me want to question the projections, because I keep seeing, like, I've got 10 kids below the age of five that are new and just immediately next to my neighborhood in my, my house. So I'm not sure how that is reflected in this. I did note that we have three schools on the north side that have really small enrollments that you would typically want to see in an elementary school, Hawthorne, Emerson, and Lowell. Just that the projected number of enrollment in those three schools is what I would consider very low, low. And then something that I had forgotten about until I looked at the full report, and it really relates to the facility master plan update we're doing for our middle schools, is if you look at page 40, figure one, I had forgotten that Washington Elementary School is the only elementary school where the kids split, middle schools. And if you look at that, some kids go to Monroe, some kids go to Franklin. If you look at the projected enrollment between those two schools, Franklin's much smaller. And I seem to recall, maybe Dr. Schuler can, can correct me, in our master facility plan, did we build some additional capacity at Franklin to fix that enrollment? And then if, if so, is that something that we'll consider, you know, in the update that we're doing right now? Because I, I know that, you know, before I got on the Board, I stood before the Board of Education trying to get, I was in Lincoln, I was in Lowell, and we were one of those schools where split middle schools. And so it just reminded me that Washington is the only elementary school where that happens. And I know that it's not ideal for those kids to have friends groups and then go to a different middle school.
Yeah. So I think, two questions, Brad, and I think you just asked, one, yes, master facility plan, specifically at Franklin, we were building some additional capacity. So I, I think very practical impact, certainly as we come back to the middle school projects. I think we have to look at that specifically for the Franklin project. Again, to your point, I, you know, I, I do think, even if there's a part of you that questions numbers within the plan, bottom line is this is going to give you a statistical pattern to watch. So if you do end up seeing in the next couple of years that at certain buildings, we're landing on the C sort of projection model, it still gives you valuable, valuable data, right? That's going to help you to, to look forward, because no matter what, right, you're still seeing a trend that's either saying kind of no matter what your entry point, right, this, this is what it looks like in the long term, right? Whether it's kind of stable up, right, down. So I, I still think it's going to give us valuable information, even, even though the, the practical reality is that we will find as we move into the out years of these projections, certain building will trend at different sort of levels of the, the projection model, which again is, is useful for us in terms of kind of seeing where we are. But very practically in the immediate, I think Franklin, we were building capacity. And I think we can come back and kind of revisit that in the overall concept plan around.
Is that an issue we've heard about from our Washington parents?
No, we have not. So in fact, what I would tell you is the, is the counter, we actually explored that conversation, you might remember, as a part of the referendum. And actually, that portion of the community said, do not move us back. We, we, we're okay with, with where we are. So that, that was actually a very specific question we explored in community engagement in 2017 referendum was, if we build additional capacity, what will the community response be to kind of undoing that boundary change? And I, candidly, I think the expectation was that that would be a very favorable response. And it was not necessarily. Doesn't, doesn't mean we can't revisit it, but just know that.
They come back together at North as well.
Yeah. But, you know, for those young kids in Washington who develop friend groups, and then they have to split for three years, maybe it's okay. Is it ideal? I don't, I don't know. But it'd be maybe some supplemental community engagement with that community as part of our updated facility master plan. And if that, if they still feel the same way, that's fine. I'm not trying to push a solution. I'm just remembering that that was an issue that we explored.
It was. Yeah, it was, it was a difficult boundary change when it happened. It was not well-received when that took place. But when we re-explored that, we were really surprised. And in fact, same thing, Dr. Sloggy, remember, we explored a similar conversation at Whittier Elementary, where Whittier is the one elementary school where we have some students from the north side of town that are attending Whittier. And we explored an opportunity to actually kind of relocate the, the boundary and also heard from that community, please don't move us. We like the, the elementary school that we're in.
They probably really liked the principal at that time.
It tends to happen with, with truth be told, with, with boundary changes, there's a, there's a practical reality that whenever you're potentially considering a decision, I think the immediate response is, you know, don't move me. That response is often obviously from those that are at a school and don't want to immediately be moved from a school. But again, to, to your point, there, there's probably some different flexibility in how we explore conversations, which is part of the utility of having this data.
Other questions?
Last little piece that I just will mention, though, too, Brad, to your point on a few of the elementary schools. So the added capacity, the capacity that we knew, we now have, especially at elementary buildings, extremely helpful as we've also seen the expansion of some of our specialized programming within schools. So again, something I think Dr. Sloggy will probably remember that when our elementary buildings were a little bit tighter overall in terms of space, we were much more regularly kind of bouncing programs from school to school. So, you know, this year, you know, a sale program was at Whittier. Next year, if Whittier didn't have the space, it was suddenly getting bounced to, you know, a different elementary building that just happened to have an available classroom that year. So number one, the, the capacity, well, I certainly understand the number piece in some of the schools that we need to watch. It does give us some predictability in terms of the, the location of programming, you know, another, just, just quick example, this year, we've expanded even some early childhood programs, both Ed Start and some of our, our PEG. It was, it, it is nice to have the ability to locate programs without being absolutely locked in terms of, of classrooms. So I, I realize we're not sort of tapped in terms of numbers as we once were, but it actually has given us some flexibility in some of the program location, which is helpful.
Other questions?
One that kind of popped into my head, I think it might be a little bit more for Mrs. Murphy. So the, the smaller schools, elementary schools, do they partner for terms of, in terms of like PLCs? Because I'm envisioning if Hawthorne's numbers drop lower, you might have only one section of a particular grade. And would that staff member have support of another teacher teaching the same grade? Like, how do they get that peer support if there's only one section of, is that Chris? Sorry.
Looking at my colleague, Dr. Sloggy here, I'll let him answer first. I can add on to it.
Yeah. So it's a great question. And so at a Hawthorne, typically, if you have two, you typically have a team. But also, one of the things that they're really vigilant about is, you know, we have a lot of specialists, our reading coaches, our math coaches, our resource staff. You are typically adding, as you build a PLC team, some of those folks onto the team as well, based upon their expertise. So those, those folks always add something to the PLC. Obviously, it's not a PLC with four or five classroom teachers, but that's one way that you get more team members as part of your teaming approach. And then one of the other things that we've heard and that, that we're taking into consideration is that our teachers have liked to interact with other grade-level teachers from other schools. We haven't been able to build lots of time into that in our school improvement days over the past couple of years, frankly, because we've been implementing new programming, curricular changes, some of those pieces. But we're, we're taking that into consideration as we move into next year. But certainly, we never have a, a time when we have just one teacher, you know, doing PLCs by themselves. We're partnering them up either with other specialists, or in most cases, we do have two sections at Hawthorne, so.
Thank you.
Anything else before my question? So I think, I think just something to kind of keep in mind, you know, I've, I've had the opportunity to be part of this district for almost 30 years. There was a time when I was teaching at Whittier, when Whittier was at its peak, we had a mobile, we had mobile classrooms. We were close to 650, five sections of just about, Mrs. Murphy and I were there at the same time, like five sections of every classroom. I'm going back to Hawthorne, I'm going to say maybe it was about 12 years ago, I was sitting at a PTA council meeting. Dr. Harris was having to present with very angry Hawthorne parents sitting there because they were busting at the seams. And they had no room to add another classroom. I remember it was third grade. And they had to bring in dual teachers to teach in those classrooms because the, the numbers were so big, but there was no space for them to be. So there's this pattern of constant change. And so, you know, I, I look at districts where they've made drastic moves and then had to come back from that. And it's really tough. But I think the thing that we have to remember is, it is going to be constantly a cyclical thing. And maybe it's, north side's a little low right now, but in a few years it could, I mean, my, my subdivision itself, houses have been popping on, they're selling before sometimes signs are even in yards. And, and so I'm real curious to see in the next couple of years, you know, what we're, what we're looking at. But I just wanted to, to mention those two data points on those two schools where we've seen numbers drop drastically. It wasn't that long ago that they were busting at the seams. So I think it's just important to know.
To your point on that, I know someone who had, whose son is my age and who lives in Wheaton in the Whittier. And she, she told me, she worked on, they were going to close Whittier because they were so small. They moved into this area so they could go to Whittier. And then they're like, there's not enough kids, we're going to shut it down. And she went knocking on doors, like, please don't shut it down. You know, so to your point, yours was busting at the seams, but then someone in my generation, they were so small, they were going to close it. So it is this sort of constant cycle. And I know Mr. Rutledge, who spoke, you know, he told me about the whole high school thing when they had to close Wheaton, I guess was that Wheaton South? And then they went to Central, and then they had to open it again. You know, and there was something with all that in there that I know that was going on. So it is a difficult, I think, to predict.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. O'Keefe. Next up, written reports attached to the agenda was the monthly financial reports, FOIA report, Board Communication Log, reports from Board members. There were, the notes were on there from the facility meeting. I know Mr. Paulson already referenced some things. Anything else that, okay. Other reports from Board members?
I have a couple of things, actually. Sorry. Okay. Couple positive things I wanted to mention is that I was able to, at the end of May, go to the Project Search graduation ceremony, which I remembered my first year, Jenna going to that, and I missed it because I didn't really know what it was. And then things happened the next couple of years. So I was really, really excited. And it was just by accident that I had asked Dr. Schuler about it. And then like two days later, he's like, it's tomorrow. Can you go? And I was like, I can. And it was such an amazing event to go to. And for, for those who don't know, there were, it's a program that, from what I understand, that usually, it's a one-year program. Our, our transition program, they usually, our transition Our, our transition program, they usually, our transition students, some of them come out of there and that's their last year of the transition program, is that they go into this and it teaches them vocational skills and they're working, it's a, Central to Page Hospital is one of the supporters of it and they might, these young adults might be working somewhere in the hospital and they just, they, they teach them skills so they're able to go get employment on their own. And there were 10 graduates total, four of them were District 200 students, one of them gave the keynote speech and he was wonderful and it was just a really, really great program and I was just really happy to attend that. And, you know, in the future, if, if anyone can attend that, I would highly recommend it. It was great. And then on the student side, I attended the business incubator presentations, which I always love. I think I've mentioned before that this is near and dear to my heart because my college degree, I was in the first class of my business school to have the concentration of entrepreneurship. And so, I, this is what I studied in college and I think, you know, I graduated in 1996 and I think it's so amazing that this is now at the high school level. Like at that time, it was like, "We're making a business plan," you know? And it was like a really big thing, but I, and, and not that it's not, but I just think it's so great that it's now at the high school level and the kids are getting that experience of seeing how that whole thing works and what the costs are and what the time it takes. So, I just think it's a really great opportunity and it was so great. I, I really enjoyed all the presentations and everyone did a really great job. So, I just wanted to give a shout out to all the participants of that. And then, on a little bit more serious note, I just wanted to bring up that I, I think I, well, I know, I had mentioned that with the resolutions, IASB resolutions and that type of thing that I had mentioned. And two years ago, I brought to the board a resolution I had written about including gun safety in handbooks or as part of our Safety Education Week. And this past legislative, legislative session, Representative Maura Hershaw had actually brought that to the Assembly as House Bill 5193 and it passed almost unanimously, unanimously out of the House and the Senate and was signed by the governor. It's not a mandate, but it does allow schools to include safe gun storage information in handbooks or to the community. I'm not, I'm not going to ask this to be like a future presentation or anything to the board. I would just like to ask you, Dr. Schuler and Dr. Kyle, just to consider it for future, I know we're done with the handbook now, but for future. Like I said, I'm not asking for a presentation to the board or anything, but this has always been something, the issue of gun safety and we unfortunately know the violence of, in our schools that it's happening. And I, I just think it's such an important piece that we can, we can do as, as a school board and as a school system. So, and I, because of this and just because of everything else going on, I was going to bring to the board a, a change to a belief statement, but I know some of the things have changed now with that and I wasn't really sure. And I just, we have other, I'm just going to be honest, we have a lot of big nuts to, to focus on right now and I, I don't want to say it wasn't worth it because I, I personally think it's worth it, but I also know, I can read the room and I know what we as a board want to focus on right now and I'm going to just stick to doing those types of things personally. But, but I just, I just wanted to bring up this, this House bill and like I said, I just wanted to ask that it be considered for a future handbook. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Booton, anybody else? Okay.
I have a quick one. I just think it's important to note that Sunday is June 19th and that's the celebration of Juneteenth, celebration of the emancipation of African-Americans and celebration of African-American culture.
Thank you, Dr. Yubola. Okay. Topics for future discussion, Vision 2026 Strategic Plan, Fiscal Year 23 Budgets, next board meeting is July 13th here at Hubble. Announcements, the board has the self-evaluation on June 29th, 6:00 PM School Service Center. Right now, we're going to, I'm going to move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act exemptions 5 ILC S 120 slash 2, sub-paragraph C, sub-paragraph 1. May I have a second?
Second.
Can you call the roll? Mrs. Hutchinson?
Ms. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Ms. Vander?
Yes.
Ms. Bluth?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Dr. Yubola?
Yes.
There will be, there is no action expected following the closed session.